I'm surprised I didn't trip over her.
I'm really worried. It was high, so.
I'm surprised I didn't trip over her.
I'm tripping.
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 Well, I actually went down there for those.
Okay, I can, I, I, I do some guarantees, but I'll try it.
Hi, how are you?
I gotta apologize to President Graham, I interrupted him yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, so he's just kind of feeling like.
You go over to, but you're done.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I never hold on, and then you're, you're.
Nah, it's alright.
Ended up, that guy, like, once I got free.
Yeah.
I don't deserve it.
The only way I would, I would care for him if I was, just had him in, I would venture.
That's all I said.
Yeah.
That's alright.
She said, no, no, you won't get him.
The other way I would, I would have cared for him if I was, just had him in, I would venture.
That's all I said.
That's the same thing.
That's alright.
She is.
You better make it forty bucks.
Go right to the top, she got me.
Forty bucks.
Oh, I gotta play for him.
I get it. You better get the right doughs in here. It depends on where, um, where you go with that stack thing. I don't know. It's hard to get people to do that, so. You want me to muster the. Yeah. We're gonna start. Thank you. Now, I think we can have a seat, we're gonna do what.
No, I can't.
Alright, we're getting the end one, it's November third, it's, uh, seven o'clock, and it's time to open the meeting of the local city council for the officers considering, uh, items that may come before it. I'm gonna ask everyone to please rise for a moment, silence, and then stand. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. President, please, please excuse the accident for a second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, who, uh, excuse the accident member, Mr. Churchill, please call the hall.
Bailey. Rodriguez. Gray. Morrison. Yes.
The accident member has been excused. Next is our approval of minutes for October twenty, two thousand fifteen, the agenda and regular meeting.
President Graham, I'd like to make the motion to accept the three few minutes. Second.
The motion by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Ford for the approval of the October twenty minutes, Mr. Churchill, please call the hall.
Bailey. Yes. Rodriguez. Gray. Yes. Morrison. Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Next, we have, uh, several special presentations, and we'll begin with our chief, please switch your position.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, members of council, this evening I'd like to take a moment of your time, and I appreciate your time, on this to recognize, uh, a citizen that went above and beyond what we normally expect of a citizen, put themselves in jeopardy to, to literally save a young girl that was in a perilous situation here in the city. Do you wanna tell the story, Officer Hollifield was the first one, um, there. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
Yeah, absolutely, chief, um, thank you. We received a call, I'll, I'll be great, but I, there's, there's a few details in here that are very important, and way above and beyond even things that, you know, when we do are exemplary. So, uh, Mr. Casey Mallett, there was a, a call we had for a girl, an autistic girl, nine-year-old, and we had run on her several times this past summer, so I knew the history of her, she is absolutely not at any position to, to take care of herself, she has no recognition of danger, nothing. So, when we got this call, I was very, you know, cognizant of, this is probably what it is, because I've had it two other times. So, this particular morning, it was dark out, we got the call, uh, it was raining, it wasn't pouring down rain, it was a setting rain, so, you know, a lot, a lot, it's hard to see when your light was on, and I get up to Broad and Hamilton area, and I go eat some raw, and I see a car, which happened to be, um, Mr. Lawrence's car, parked blocking eastbound traffic, so his own vehicle, he parked with his wife in the car too, of all things, probably got yelled at for that. And I see this girl, she's in her PJs, she has no shoes on, she's soaking wet, she's pushing this little toy, just kind of liking this little figure eight, you know, just haphazardly, and I see him going into traffic, where it transitions from fifty to thirty-five, and unfortunately, you know, that, that section happens really quickly with, with traffic, and people going from fifty almost to zero, once you get to the, the Hamilton road light. So, it's, it's dangerous, it's wet, it's slick, it's pouring down rain, and I see some cars swerving, and I see him out there trying to hurt this girl and, and, and get her off the side of the road, and all these cars are swinging by his back, and splashing with water, and I'm like, oh my god, this guy's crazy, he's gonna get killed, and I see this girl, I'm like, oh jeez, thank goodness, somebody was out there to save her, and when I, I spoke to him, obviously I was just, I was floored and astounded, and he said, you know, people were treated like ready to kill. Ah, I, not much, you know, gets past his armor, and, you know, it, it almost choked me up that day, I tried not to let anyone see it, and I thought, that's exactly what other people were doing, not one person called, not one single driver called, nobody did anything except for him, and I'm absolutely positive that he saved her life that day, because somebody was going to hit her. I was actually amazed at the time it took for us to get from the station up there that she had been hit, and I know why that she was saved was because of him, so, it was, uh, just, you know, every day heroic action by somebody very special, so, I wanted to, you know, wrote, wrote his commander a letter, because I wanted him recognized just for outstanding, was, and then chief told me, you know, that he got something together, and presented it, and had some signatures from the other dictators in the city, so, very much deserved, and the thing is, I almost had to, like, get him down and wrestle him down for his name, because he didn't win anything. So, I think that's another testament to just probably who he is as a person, and, uh, was very thankful that day personally, and I think as a city that, uh, you know, we really averted the tragedy that we would have had to handle, uh, if it weren't for him, so, I very appreciate of, of his actions.
So, um, members of city council and, and city officials, this is Sergeant First Class Casey Mallett, he also represents the United States Army. Thank you very much. So, of course, you know what the sergeant said, oh, it's no big deal, uh, you know, anybody would have done that, uh, and, and so I had to tell him, uh, you don't think it's a big deal, what if you wouldn't have done what you did, and that goal would have gotten rid of, that app would have been a big deal, so it really was. So, on behalf, um, of the safety director, and this is safety director Underwood, on behalf of safety director Underwood, myself, city administration, and the citizens of Whitehall, and thank you very much for what you did, for what you did. Thank you. You saved Officer Hollifield a whole mustache. Uh, yeah, President, uh, could we, uh, have a sergeant introduce his family to serve?
Sir, absolutely.
There was one hiding back there.
Uh, this is my wife, Kristy Mallett, uh, we've been married for ten years, and our almost three-year-old son is breaking for that. Alright, uh, now we're gonna hear from, uh, how do I use your name, Talman, Talman Clayton, uh, and he's gonna tell us about his project, uh, for the, uh, for the Boy Scouts.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna take a few seconds to explain, uh, a service project that I'm performing to the American Legion. So, I'm Talman Clayton, I'm a Life Scout, Boy Scout Troop Six Twenty-Two, uh, and this Saturday, I'm at the seventh, uh, ten AM in the morning, we're gonna do a American flag retirement ceremony. We're gonna take some tattered worn flags that can't be used to represent the nation, you know, uh, that the American Legion's gathered, uh, and respectfully retire them, uh, in a way that shows dignification of sorts. Um, to that effect, uh, we'd like, I'd like to include two types of, uh, important views that I would like to look for this ceremony, just to, uh, look at the flag itself, uh, as I said before, retire it in such a way, uh, that's dignified, but also explain how the design of the flag is important to, uh, it's, it symbolizes things to the people who might not know, and how a lot of the symbolism of how we care for the flag, uh, is representative to our military, because, uh, this is all, this ceremony is also in honor of Veterans Day, just coming up soon. Uh, and that would be the second point, or point of interest we're looking to, is actually our veterans, uh, they're very important, I would like to give a view or acknowledgement of our veterans by performing this ceremony. Uh, so to that effect, uh, at the beginning of this ceremony, the scouts will be, would like to attempt to show honor to, uh, local veterans that have been, uh, that live here, that of any kind, servicemen or women, uh, to retire a specific flag to their honor, so I set up a email address, aldedication@gmail.com, to where people could send in information, if they would like to, uh, about, uh, information about a serviceman, that during the ceremony we could take and, uh, recognize that information, recognize that person, uh, thank them for their service, and retire a flag in their honor. I think that's something that'd be nice for us to do. Uh, so, to that effect. Oh, that was, uh, ten AM.
And the website was what?
Talman created, he created a flyer, and there are a number of.
Yes, I believe they're here, they're, this one right here, it looks like. So, the, the information I'm seeing is gonna be, oh, it's gonna be right there, too, that I'll, I'll be, uh, giving off. Um, so, that would be at American Legion Post Four-Ninety, it is one-one-one-seven South Amazon Road, uh, ten AM, I believe there, the Legion is also having a Veterans Breakfast at eight, where, uh, you can invite veterans over to come over, over there and have a nice breakfast with them, uh, and of course, if there's any veterans that you know of that you'd like to be honored during our ceremony, uh, the email address there, aldedication@gmail.com, I'd love to have, uh, those specific, uh, servicemembers that, that I'd like to give honor to that too. Thank you.
Alright, and we have one more, uh, item under our special presentation, and that will be the White Mayor.
Ebony, where is it? I'd like to introduce Ebony Roselle to you, uh, Ebony contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and her personal story, and how we need to, um, recognize that this is pancreatic cancer awareness, moved me, and, but first of all, I'd like to tell you, or for you to tell our audience a little bit of what you told me in the letter.
It's my niece, Ebony Roselle, and January second, two thousand thirteen, I lost my younger brother named Carter, also a White House resident, pancreatic cancer, at age twenty-four.
Alright.
At that time, we had no idea how devastating that disease could be. Um, I, I, with working with, um, Pancreatic Cancer Network, Action Network, I learned that seventy-three percent of people diagnosed with this illness will die within, within the first year. Ninety-three will die within five years. Um, it is has the lowest survival rate of all cancers, but yet has the least survival rate. Um, I believe if more people were aware of how devastating this is, there could be more research, and I don't think anyone should be calling the guard as a part. So, with the work with Pancreatic Cancer Network, I want to prevent that from happening, I mean, more people should know about how devastating this is, the need for action, the need for research, the need for a cure, and the need for just hope. Had we known that this was so, um, unrecognizable, had we known this decade, we would not have been called guard away from it. Now, it's not, it was very uncommon, he had a rare form of a rare cancer at a very low age, so, there was not, there was no way to be prepared for that, but we would have had more support, we would have had more, we would have had more knowledge, so, that's why I contacted her, um, 'cause there are a lot of cities all over America, all over the world, um, um, acknowledging November thirteenth as World Pancreatic Cancer, um, Day, and it's meant to get to me, 'cause my brother, his birthday is November twelve, the day before, so I thought there's no better way of honoring his struggle and his courage, and the other things that are conflicted by this disease, and to reach out to our mayor, and, you know, let her know that this is going on, and she was awesome, we got back to you right away, I was actually bungled away to hop back, so thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, and so, what we're doing tonight is a proclamation, um, it says, "Whereas, in two thousand fifteen, an estimated forty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty thousand five hundred sixty will die from the disease, and whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to be done with a second by twenty-twenty, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just seven percent, and whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally a late stage, and seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years, and whereas, one thousand nine hundred twenty deaths will occur in Ohio in two thousand fifteen, and whereas, pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world, and whereas, there will be an estimated three hundred and sixty-seven thousand new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in two thousand fifteen, and whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents in Whitehall, Ohio are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, be it resolved, I commend, Mayor of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, to recognize November third today, in our city, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day, and I call service to the attention of our residents. And this is something for you that I want you to keep, and remember for your, um, journey as you go forward, to spread the message about early diagnosis and, uh, the research that needs to be done. Thank you so much, Ebony, and I'm so sorry about your brother. Take care.
Alright, we'll move on now, uh, uh, on the agenda, you poll public, there's a, a, a committee to, uh, just counsel, and everyone would like to take advantage of it, who's come forward, say your name, and ask for everything, why not three minutes?
I don't understand, uh, Ralph Wilson, I'm like, Mark Coniston, nine-five-eight, Carroll Street, I don't understand, uh, once a year, I wish, Councilwoman Coniston, happy anniversary, but our anniversary is not till February, and she says, I'm not allowed to do this anymore.
I did.
Uh, there's another issue I have figured out, what to do, as we're campaigning going up the dental streets, we saw a lot of houses with no addresses on them, we have to do something about this, so please, the fire can find, find these houses, 'cause they can't find them, it's gonna be something, you know, so, we find the addresses, get addresses on the, all the houses in Whitehall. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Alright, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, we'll begin with the administration, financial management, Chairperson Bailey. Thank you, Mr. President, administration and financial management, did meet last Tuesday, and we're so, uh, and we're meeting next Tuesday sometime after six thirty. Economic development, Chairperson Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President, economic development, also met last Tuesday, and we're in the final, and next Tuesdays, and after six thirty.
President, public safety, Chairperson, uh, I'm sorry, infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Gray. Thank you. Community standards and enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez, thank you, Mr. President, community standard and enforcement, that's to be as well, and it's on file, we're meeting in Tuesday, so. Economic development, Chairperson Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President, economic development, also met last Tuesday, and we're in the final, and next Tuesdays, and after six thirty.
President, public safety, Chairperson, uh, I'm sorry, infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Gray.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and fifteen has been tabled indefinitely. Next we have ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand and fifteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of five thousand nine hundred nine dollars, one cent from the Taxation and Financing Fund to the Hamilton Broad Incentive Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce the seventy-eight, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Briggs for the introduction and adoption of ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Next we have ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Approving and making a supplemental, supplemental, wait a minute. Let me start over. Approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of five thousand nine hundred nine dollars, one cent from the Hamilton Broad Incentive Account to the Main Yearling Incentive Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce the seventy-nine, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Lepore for the introduction and adoption of ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-nine, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Those are all the items we have under third reading. Moving to our second reading items, we begin with ordinance eighty, two thousand and fifteen. Amending section three-three-three point zero-two and replacing section three-three-three point zero-eight of the record go of the Whitehall classified ordinances.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance eighty-two, two thousand and fifteen, and move the special rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Connison for the suspension of rules on ordinance eighty, introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance eighty, two thousand and fifteen, point one hundred and fifty. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty, two thousand and fifteen. Moving on.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Connison for adoption of ordinance eighty, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Moving on, we have ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of ten thousand dollars from unappropriated monies to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Law Enforcement Credit Side Forfeiture Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen. I would move the suspension of rules.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Lepore for the introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen. Moving on.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Lepore for adoption of ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-one, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ordinance eighty-two, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending the zoning act attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy classified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-two C two to allow Two Tone LLC to operate a annual brewery at property located at one forty-five North Hamilton Road, uh, parcel owned by HGI Midwest Two LLC. That, uh, is being read by Title Hallway and it's also scheduled for a public hearing on, uh, November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Next we have ordinance eighty-three, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending the zoning act attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy classified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero C ten to allow Tracy Fields DBA, All and All Customs, to operate a repair and specialty establishment property located at forty twenty-five A East Main Street, owned by Richard Sheets and the Attorney in Emergency. That ordinance is also being read by Title Hallway. It is also scheduled, uh, for a public hearing on November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Next is ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending section one-one-two-four-point-one-zero titled Whitehall Commercial Overnight District and the classified ordinances of the city of Whitehall to clarify the permitting process and prohibited rolling doors, security bars, and or gates, et cetera. Mr. President, I would like to have ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and fifteen amended as shown in tonight's copy.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gray uh, to amend ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and fifteen as shown in the copy of the board council this evening. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and fifteen has been amended and it will also have its public hearing on November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Next, we have Resolution twenty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with local waste services to be the sole provider of solid waste, recycled materials, recyclable materials, and yard waste collection services for waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events in the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and enter into an agreement with Ron Key of Ohio Incorporated to provide the provision of recycling services including the acceptance of delivery and processing of recyclable materials generated in and collected from residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events. Being read by Title Hallway. Those are all the items we have under second reading and the first reading. We have ordinance eighty-six, two thousand and fifteen, making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of three thousand six dollars, thirty-five cents from the fiscal year two thousand thirteen Giant Grant Fund to the General Fund and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Hallway. Next is ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending section one-three-five-point-zero-four of the classified ordinances titled Deputy Tax Commissioner and Tax Investigator. Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. Move the suspension of rules.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. Motion by, second. Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by, wait, second. By, uh, Mr. Connison for the introduction and suspension of rules on eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. We have, everything's got to flow a pretty good. Okay, uh, so questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right. Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez. And very quick second. No thought, you gave your thought. Uh, from Ms. Connison for the introduction or for the adoption of ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, please call the hall. Any others?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
We have five, six very deliberate revol- of votes on ordinance eighty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, and it has been accepted. Next. And next is ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Amending section seven-three-seven-point-zero-two of the classified ordinances titled License, Requirements, Fees.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Move the suspension of the rules. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lepore, second by Mr. Gray for the introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen.
Moving to adopt. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lepore, second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Moving on, we have ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending section seven-five-seven-point-zero-eight of the classified ordinances titled Income Tax Fund.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Move the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Lepore for the introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen.
Moving to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Lepore for adoption of ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. And that's how it should go. All right. Next we have ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen. It's amending section seven-five-nine-point-zero-seven of the classified ordinances titled Income Tax Fund.
I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen and move the suspension of all rules. Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Connison, the second by Mr. Rodriguez for the introduction and suspension of the rules on ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Move the suspension of all rules. I would like to give you a little bit of information. All right. Uh, Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen.
Moving on.
Second. Motion by, uh, Ms. Connison, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance eighty, or ninety, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. Moving on, we have Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Proving the continuation of a tax exemption agreement with Realty Income Columbus and FedEx Ground Heating Systems Incorporated in conjunction with the City of Whitehall Community Reinvestment Area Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Move the suspension of rules.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules on Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution, rules have been suspended on Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Moving to go.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Churchill, who's called the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen has been adopted. It is the last item of legislation this evening. Brings us to our second opportunity to the whole public. Anyone who would like to address counsel, please come forward at this time. Saying now on, we will move on to community engagement.
Good evening, counsel. Um, so just to do, uh, Saturday, the Saturday at ten AM, Bethany's Day Parade, starting Holy Spirit, going to the high school. Uh, DFW luncheon is directly following. And the flag and trinket ceremony currently is slated for ten AM also. I think I believe Sunday, please pack this along to anyone that you know might need it. The Uwee Ministries is giving away two hundred turkeys on Sunday morning at ten AM. The first two hundred people in line get food and turkeys. Um, it's going to be crazy, I think, there. So, um, and they've got stuff for everybody who's in line too. So, um, and they've got stuff for everybody who's in line, too. So, um, I know there are a lot of people who are looking forward to that to help for Thanksgiving. So, that is this Sunday at 10:00 a.m. And then, um, jumping way forward, uh, Friday the 27th, the VFW is having free Thanksgiving meal for veterans.
If you go on the Thanksgiving page, you've got the CCA Thanksgiving page, all of the winners, the Halloween contest are on there, and the pictures are amazing, as were the houses, unfortunately, because that's, um, and I'm just here because, as we were talking about before, so many people go out for Halloween decorating, um, and also I can't do Christmas anymore, so it was a lot of fun, so, but please check that out and, uh, give some kudos to the people that went out and did that for the most.
Anyone else have anything for community debate? All right, let's, uh, we'll move on to, uh, this point, we'll move to all Council, we'll begin with, uh, Mr. Bailey. Thank you, Mr. President, very inspiring evening, uh, and, uh, Mr. LaCord, I think it's, uh, I think everybody's talking about it, so, uh, so, all right. Mr. Rodriguez, what he said. No, just, oh, it's worth, I did discover that, uh, the, uh, the election was also waiting until after 9:00 p.m. to get a new election handled in Hamilton County, so, ordinance worth it, uh, to me, that's a good one. Well, maybe you are, yeah. Why sitting over here asking somebody over there saying that? Mr. Gray?
Just wanted to thank everyone for coming and, uh, feel like we, uh, to be a man, uh, did my job as well yourself, and, uh, feel welcome to, uh, bother.
Um, I hope that you can toss them, maybe I'll change it with time, and, oh, Jack, um, with the veterans, they pray, I mean, obviously, we would love to help you come out, and be in the fray, and, uh, have their voice out, sure, come out as well, um, so, see what you can do for us for that, and, uh, we would be happy to attend wars afterwards. Um, Ebony, um, you know, I know, I mean, that's our, like, with this, or, or, and, um, for you to share your stories, wonderful and thoughtful. Um, I take care of health and all this, um, whole portion of things on HR, and that's one of the areas that actually we have been putting information out about, and I think that that's, you know, what everybody needs to do, just get that information out, there's people just sit and pack up and wait up for it. So, thank you for sharing that. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
LaCord?
Thank you. I did want to say, you know, we're leading, it's where it's more of a, um, me tonight, Ebony and I, you know, exactly what we're going through, a very close cousin, one, and we found out two weeks later she was gone, and it wasn't because, um, she wasn't going to the doctor, she was a year of, oh, I'm just telling you that it was just so hidden, and it was just too late by the time we found her, so my heart was out to you, and it was , you know, I guess, um, and then, uh, the Jesus speaks presentation, definitely was very inspirational to, especially my heart, as everyone knows, I do have a foster granddaughter, and there's times when I wonder how, you know, as she gets older, I see that, oh, it's a big, it's a big, um, she's in function in the world, and I just kind of, that was always something that I worried about in the younger days, and, just, we just gotta make people that just really step out and just help out in the situation, um, just be following, for that being, and, um, I wish I had one, it became, and, Tom and I just want to tell you, you did a great job speaking tonight, and it was not easy, and you just did not miss one part of the speech that you presented tonight, you just took care of, and take some lessons off of you, I think, so, but other than that, I just want to say to the citizens of Whitehall, thank you for voting, and it's very important that we listen to the votes of our, our, uh, citizens on helping with the city to improve, so, I'm excited to see how that's, um, going to turn out tonight, I just want to say, you do it, thank you, and we'll play them to you.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank everyone for coming out today, and it was a very good presentation this evening, and I also, uh, took the time to go over there and, uh, uh, take the decision. All right. I, uh, also want to thank everyone for coming out to see me, and, uh, it was a, uh, very good evening for a meeting, and had a lot of participation, uh, and I always think that that's great, if you work, but just hear any comments. So, we have no other official business coming before this evening, um, entertain a motion of adjournment.
Most of it is adjourned.
Okay, so, I have a motion by Mr. LaCord, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adjournment. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
LaCord?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
I don't know if you all have a head, face, man. Ms. Churchman, and everyone, we are adjourned.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I'm,